We'll call it over. The Town on McCandless Town Council Meeting for June 13th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Singer is not with us, so Mr. Casey, if you could lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Want to let everybody know, we just convened from executive session where we're discussing collective bargaining and litigation matters, and no action was taken. As we start all of these meetings, it's good to remind everybody, given some of the things that are going on today in the world, that while we're here, we're here to work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect because in the end, we are all neighbors here. Some quick announcements before we get started. I guess introductions to this woman to my right. For those of you who don't know, Tricia Gray, she's our interim town manager. Welcome to your first meeting. We'll take it easy on you. And we're allowed to answer, "I don't know, I'll get back to you." So, thank you for stepping in.
Thank you.
Before, for serving with you for the next bit of time here. A few announcements, Waste Management. We are seeing an uptick, a drastic uptick in complaints from the community on trash or recycling or yard waste that is not being picked up. I've had two in my district, so I guess I'm just putting this on here. So if anybody that's watching online and in today, or even here on council, please get those to Joanne or through Tricia, to Joanne, and we will aggregate those. I know we are looking to...
We're putting a letter together to Waste Management with the addresses and the lists, and following up routinely to ensure that there has been pickup.
And we do have financial recourse if it gets...
That's what we are preparing for.
Very good. Further announcements, we have our zoning open house on June 23rd. Activity starts from four to eight. All the details are on our website. And then we also have our application process for new police officers. Is that on our website, Tricia?
Yes. It's if you go through employment or through the Police Department homepage.
Good. So, right now we'll take public comment on agenda items only. For those that are in the audience first, all you do is come up, those know your name, where you live, and then those here are done, and we'll see if anybody online has anything, so.
Oh, Hetman 105 to nine, Abby Ling. RJ's not here this evening, but I just wanted to put officially out a thank you for the outstanding job she did in organizing the material for the redistricting commission. She did the research, the presentation, the organization, the presentation that I think made a very job, a very easy job for the commission to do what little needed to be done. I'm not going to give away an update on it, but it was just an amazingly good job of making sure that everything that we needed to know was there, was well presented, that made it very easy to walk through the process. Also, when you see RJ, she's been a fan.
Thank you. Anyone else? Janice. Not anyone online? Okay. Very good. Next up, item five. The meeting minutes were distributed in our packet from the May 23rd meeting. Wonder if anybody had any edits to that or any comments? None at my right? Okay. Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the May 23rd meeting?
Some moved.
Some moved to, okay, Ms. Kuhn. Second.
Second.
Second. Any comments? Any from the audience? Everyone in favor of accepting the meeting minutes, May 23rd? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Karen's? Now, reports of the committees. Dr. Rappa, could you run us through the Public Safety Committee reports?
Yes, thank you. First report, if you look in your packet, you'll see the Chief Hawks' report on the Police Department. And if you have any questions, Chief Hawk is here. Or you might want to mention a few things you've been involved in too.
Very quickly, if I may, folks. Just want to call your attention to the training this past month. We complete as much as we can every month. This month, the rest of the department completed their mandatory service training through Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission. We also completed annual fire license qualifications. Half the officers were certified in the deployment of the BOLA Act. We talked about that a little bit last month. There was also training in standard field sobriety tests. I finished up. It bled into May. The Polix training was two weeks in length. I finished, I completed that in May. Also in May, as you'll see, unfortunately, we all see it on the news, Sergeant Egley conducted a couple act of shooter presentations to staff and faculty at North Allegheny Senior High School. Again, Sergeant Egley and Officer Del Val volunteered and participated in a Special Olympics sports run. Different police departments were involved in this. That was probably middle of the month. Also of note, officers participated in crosswalk safety checks last month. I think they were mandated to watch state roadways and make sure that pedestrians were abiding by their crosswalks. Finally, in my report here, we also met with the North Allegheny baseball team, the senior circuit. The varsity team came down and we had lunch with them one day back in May. So, and while I had a moment, I wanted to say thank you to, word to Councilperson Casey and interim town manager Tricia for having me up with to Conmigo last week. I think that was well attended, and I'm sure the folks appreciated it.
Thanks for attending.
Thanks for having me. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fire marshal listener, in your packet you also will find resources. And I didn't know if there was anything you'd like to mention.
I don't have anything to add, but I do want to just do a quick reminder for those council members that have not taken the NIMs classes. I'm not sure who has what. But that was something that I did also, you know, Mr. Farley. I can kind of re-send it out, but the Jufre Two class, which is coming up on July 27th, that is roughly a three-hour class, but usually it is much less than that. I've sat through that class with some council members in my previous job. It is online, so it's through Microsoft Teams, but that's the last one I know of this year. So if you missed that, you kind of probably have to wait till next year, or you can't take the ICS 100 and 700 classes online. So it's kind of either or. But you kind of are supposed to have one or the other. That's all I just wanted to remind everybody.
We would like anyone that completes them to print out their certificates so that we can file them for future events.
Yeah, I'm supposed to keep copies of not only yours, but our employees', so that wherever audited, we can provide that information. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. The building permits that have been issued are in your packet. I don't see RJ here, but perhaps, Tricia, you might know anything about him if there's any questions.
If there's any questions, I'm happy to...
Any questions about permits? One last thing, I didn't know if our Public Works Director has any, anything you'd like to add or make a comment about.
I'm actually, I get them up next.
Okay. All right, that would conclude our report.
Would you like to continue through the liaison reports?
Okay.
Personnel Board, Mr. Schlecker. Okay, so currently we have the application process open to hopefully soon have a new hire for a police officer. Hopefully, we'll get many applications in the next few weeks. We also have three board positions that we are going to make votes on there on tonight. So that's pretty much it right now.
Volunteer Fire Restrict Committee, Mr. Singer, if he's not here.
We have not met this month. We will meet at the end of the month. I believe that meeting is on the 27th or 28th, whichever is the Tuesday. 28?
28. Okay. Public Works activity.
Hello. May was a, May was a good month for us overall. I'll skip over the weather since we didn't have any snow.
We were actually here for the weather.
That's true. Signage, traffic control. I don't know if you folks know, but we, every year before the paving program, we go by and replace any signs that are worn or considered not up to our standards. But we did 53 traffic sign replacements, seven signal repairs. For some reason, compared to last year, I think we had three for signal repairs. But we did seven. We had two signal inspections. Those were also logged in T-SENS. I keep bringing that up every month, but that's the state's database for all our signals. It's an online database that allows us to put drawings, inspection reports, anything in there. So that was something new that we started a few months back. But we also sent our signal folks, our two guys for signal training, two of those in mail. So that's something that we haven't really done in the past, but we needed to do that. And those courses are actually free. They're through the suppliers. PA One calls. We had 260 for the month, just this season, but that, I imagine June will be in the threes. But for those of you that don't know what the One calls are, before any utilities can dig, we have to go mark out our stormlines. So those are time consuming, so 260 is a lot. Construction projects, there's a lot on here. We are finally done completely with all the roads that are going to be paved. So we're at a schedule on that. But while we had no money, we're continuing on. The ones that are still in progress are, they're in process, are the two basins at Fox Grove. Those are done, they just need filled. We have seven basins on Panier. And two manholes, we're also putting over 1,000 feet of concrete pipe in on there. So I imagine that's going to be probably till the end of July. We also don't have landscape repairs, driveway repairs that we had to do for Perry Highway, patching potholes. It was, I believe, in the beginning of May, we had a large tree fall on our signal wires over Perry. We had about 12 guys there. We had to coordinate with the state, but we were able to get it done in two hours, which honestly was impressive considering we had to have other folks involved. But we had traffic control and everything set up. Doesn't seem like a big deal, but to me, that was a huge success. Also, May was a huge month for park maintenance. We did a lot of work down on Vestal Field, which the lights, I checked on the LED lights for the ball field. They are still scheduled to come in this week, so hopefully those will be replaced this week. We did do some work at Vincentian Field, cutting grass. We did Memorial Park, trimmed all the hedges, cleaned that up a bit. We did put mulch flowers, again, cutting the grass. Council Park, we cleaned the whole tree line out, cut the grass, and started to build a small shed for those folks down there. That's going to have a small water buffalo inside the shed, so they have water. Previously, we did nothing, and those ladies had to fill up five-gallon buckets of water and bring them home. We looked into getting public water there, but the price, especially in today's world, was way, way out of our budget, so. Emirates Authority continued to cut their grass. At the Avenue Building, we did all the hedges, trees, trimming, stuff like that. Still in the process of mulching. Around the DPW Building, we actually removed a bunch of hedges, removed every other one. They were so overgrown that we couldn't even trim them back. There were nothing but sticks. The other thing we did was we cut the field up off of Pontiac Avenue, where we had a, it was a former dump site. It was supposed to be a park or something at one time. I'm not sure what happened, but it was way overgrown. We've really lacked on maintenance there. We cut that down. A lot of the folks that lived over that way were very happy about it. Other than that, vehicle and equipment maintenance, it was also a busy month. We had a, many of our older trucks had some pretty extensive repairs, spring packs for the rear suspension. We had three ambulances came in for preventive maintenance. One had a pretty hefty repair. Police Department, five vehicles came in for preventive maintenance. Seven came in for repairs. And other than that, just normal maintenance, our trailers, we are rehabbing our trailers. So we don't have to buy anything new right now, but... And then one last note is the paving program will start sometime right after the Fourth of July. So I'm going to send the notice to proceed out next week, and I'll get an exact date. And just like last year, we will make sure daily that the websites updated as to where we're at and where we're going next. I think last year's paving program went pretty smoothly.
I have one question.
Yes.
Have we gotten any bids for the tennis courts at all?
We did. We got, the bids came in Friday. And to be honest with you, I had to look through it. We only got one bid. We should have had two, but the guy didn't have a bid bond for the amount we needed, so. We're going to, I met with Jason on Friday to discuss it, but that, I'm planning on having the next council meeting to prove that, but, and that's kind of where we're at with that. So I wasn't actually going to bring that up because it was in June, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think the HVC and window renovations fell due since we're, do we have an update on that?
I met with the engineers. The window folks came out, remeasured everything upstairs, downstairs. That was, I think, last Thursday. The HVAC engineer, we're still kind of in a design stage, I guess you could say.
They're specing it out. Some of the improvements that they had for the interior were aggressive.
Yes. So I think we're kind of now on the right page as far as what we were looking for and what they thought we were looking for. There was some confusion there. But, I mean, that's something for a conversation for us to have about the boiler and everything else. But I think the meeting that we had went well, but I don't think we were all on the same page when we had the meeting.
Thank you for the update.
Any other questions?
Jeff, it'd be nice if you would try to include UV lighting inside.
Yeah, we talked about that also for clean air, or the air intakes. There was just a couple confusing points that, and since I wasn't involved really from the beginning, I didn't know where we left off, so I don't want to say we're back at square one, but we're kind of back at square one.
There's a lot to do with the timeline too, because of having to tear things down and move the staff.
Now, we figured out the rooftop units too are eight to 12 months out. Some of them are 14 months out. The other thing is, we got to decide if we want to do this when we need heat or when we need AC. Yeah, because we're going to try and do this in four quadrants. Keep the place rolling while we're doing the first class.
One other thing that was brought up at the Technology Committee.
Yes.
Is that is the fact that we're going to be removing probably some of the ceilings because of the HVAC system and things like that. If there is any wiring that needs to be done, it would only make sense that you would do it then when the ceiling is removed, rather than to have to come back and redo it.
Talking about protect, like cats, yes, I agree.
So I don't think we budgeted for that, did we?
Yes, not, it doesn't include rewiring the town hall.
So, you know, it's something we as a council need to think about because, you know, if the ceiling is exposed, why would we wait down the road and then have to open up the ceiling all over again to do the things we do when it could be done then?
That's a good point. Definitely.
So maybe we could even look into some bids on that or something, so we could see if there's...
Has anybody checked for asbestos?
As far as I know, no. I'm not sure.
We'd have to go back to the...
Yeah. I don't think there's any spray insulation up in there, but I'm not sure. So that's something, again, this was, this was the first part of what I was involved in with it. And, I mean, I do have some HVAC experience, so I was at least able to bring something to the table with the meeting, so.
Maybe talk with Andy and we could figure out, they could give us some kind of cost. Tricia, does that sound right?
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Anybody have any other questions?
Doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Reports of Service Committee, Ms. Corney. I'm sorry. Environmental Advisory Committee, Mr. Casey.
Everything's in the packet, but I would like to ask if everybody's received a copy of the TIC-CAT stone report? I don't think it's been disseminated. Just, we supposedly received it.
I think I just have the most recent one?
Yes.
I have not seen it.
Someone, you have seen it?
I've seen it, yes, but it's done, so I'll make sure you get it.
Yes, please.
You asked, Mr. Casey?
That's it for Environment.
Technology Committee, I asked Andy if he would please give us a little update about our new phone system, but also the enterprise software and some things that have been going on here.
Do you want to introduce yourself so everyone knows who you are, who you're with?
I'm Andy Padak, I'm Systems Architect with PM Computing and the main technological and IT representative for the Town of McCandless. We had the privilege of presenting to the Technology Committee about two weeks ago.
Sorry about that.
And now that I'm completely off track, but I just want to highlight some of the key things that we've been working on lately. The major obstacle that we've been attacking over the course of the better part of the last year has been improving the network quality and the network infrastructure for Town Hall, Public Works, and the Police Department, starting with the Police Department, which in previous had not had any sort of substantial firewall. We were able to remedy that. We also upgraded all of the network connectivity in the Police Department with three new switches. And all of these switches and access points are in support of the anticipated new phone system that will be coming in. Similarly, we tackled the same with Town Hall and Public Works. So as of right now, all of the technology infrastructure that we have is no longer on an annual subscription basis and has result, will result in approximately $2,500 per year savings in those licensing going forward. Additionally, we put more cost-effective equipment in place as well in support of the telephone system. And that's really been the key focus, is that how do we get a better performance out of what we have? And as Dr. Rappa mentioned, in the Technology Committee, we did discuss about the potential need for rewiring to isolate the network away from the kitchenette in Town Hall, so that in, if there is any need for rewiring, it can be done at that time. And will help just create an environment more welcoming for staff, instead of having to sit and enjoy your lunch in a room with a giant network rack with a bunch of wearing lights and fans. And the Police Department has been also a big focus over the course of the last three years. We have replaced aging desktops. We've replaced six, added four additional from the units that were replaced, and replaced one cruiser laptop. In addition, we also installed televisions for CAD viewing of the county access directory, the CAD system. In the detective's offices, we also added four cameras for remote viewing of the township cameras specifically, so that the officers have a clear line of sight to anyone that's in the holding cell at any time. We've also replaced the Police Department server as well. And what that has allowed is, it allows for utter flexibility for the police officers, allowing them to use any of the computers within the squad room. And also with the replacement of that server, eliminates additional redundant hardware that wasn't needed and has allowed for the officers to actually be able to access their emails and their files directly on their cruiser laptops in their cars. And again, you know, one of the big things that we have worked for is, worked towards, excuse me, is really coming up with a way to stop additional expenditures on subscriptions and hardware that isn't needed. As an example, all of the archiving of email is now cloud-based, which allows for flexible, more budgetable individual costs per user. With the Barracuda email device that was in place, it was only a limited amount of storage and required an annual subscription of about $900 in addition to needing new hardware. So as a result, our push and our focus going forward will be to making Town Hall and Public Works more accessible for all individuals to choose how they work, whether that be via cloud or remote, and ensuring that going forward, there is no disruption in the technology and the dissemination of everything amongst all staff members. Now, that is a bit of a truncated presentation. I tend to ramble, as many people here know, so I...
Do you want to say anything about the phone system and the enterprise software?
Absolutely. So with regards to the phone system, the phone system is being, the project was selected for third generation to come in and provide IP telephony systems, replacing the outdated Toshiba system that is currently in place. What's nice about this system is that in addition to having individual desk phones, we can actually have remote applications that users can use on their mobile device to make and receive calls, that they could even take their desk phones home with them if there is another escalation of the current environment that we are experiencing. In addition to that, it'll fully integrate with Microsoft Teams as well. So because of that, now we have a more flexible system that will allow for the remote work and ultimately allow for a maximum, an increase in productivity due to that fact. So there's no more trying to guess if so-and-so is here today or working remotely. By simply checking Microsoft Teams, we can see who's actually working and available. And the phone system ties directly into that as well, too. So if a user says they're away on vacation, they mark their status as on vacation. The phone system automatically either forwards their calls or just sends the calls directly to the voicemail. Additionally, all voicemails will be transcribed... Additionally, all voicemails will be transcribed to email as well. Which is nice, so that way you can actually have a dictated record of those calls. And again, all of that information will be backed up and archived as well. The enterprise software is still in the process of being selected. But again, all of these applications that are being looked at are all cloud based. And the reason being is that how do we offer staff and users a more flexible experience? If you are tied to a software solution that requires you to be physically in this building, there's additional infrastructure that needs to be put in place. And in terms of ease of simplicity, it's not. If you've ever connected to a V P N to connect to your work documents, you'll know that if there's one little hiccup in that line, you can no longer connect. So by moving and focusing towards cloud based applications, that will allow for any user to use any device that they're choosing, whether it be a Microsoft Surface, an iPad, or their computer to access that information and proceed with better supporting and doing of their job. Are there any questions?
I can add to Andy's presentation that we are in the process of communicating with the phone system company. We're about halfway through the introduction process and we expect to have phones on site by the end of the month for staff to begin to test out.
And the transition will probably, the physical transition from the previous to the new phone system will actually be almost instantaneous. As soon as the old system is switched off, there's about a thirty minute disconnection and then the new phones will start working in their step. So all extensions, everybody will be listed. And the other nice thing is, is that if you communicate town business using a cell phone, you will also be able to install the mobile app so that it'll look like any phone call coming from you will be coming from Town of McCandless and not an individual going forward as well.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate it. Stormwater management, ad hoc committee, Mr. Singer is not here. Mr. Casey, do you want to say anything regarding that storm?
I know that our town engineer did have a conversation with Mr. Eichner. And I think everything is as good as possible at this point with Mr. Eichner and they're moving forward.
Thank you. Public comment on, on facilities management?
Yeah, we could probably throw in public safety as well.
Public safety as well.
Joe Wall, excuse me, seventy-five Arcadia Drive. I would caution. Council, with the purchase of the new phone system, that you have to be very careful with the National Defense Acquisition Act. A lot of people are overlooking that, where we have chips that are in these apparatus from China. And there is a list, I'm sure you're aware, so I'm sure you're complying with it, so that's all I just wanted to bring to your attention.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, next up, reports of the Services Committee, Ms. Clooney, if you could run us through those.
Thank you, Mr. Clooney. Uh, we will start with the McCandless Township Sanitary Authority, Mr. Casey.
Last minute, they introduced the authority to White Tail Management and they went and gave a presentation. Because that property right there off of Arcadia, frequently you see deer hit on McKnight Road. And so it looks like they're going to allow for White Tail to come in and manage the deer in that particular area, so. Be happy about that. And the rest of the reports are all in our packet.
Thank you. Moving on to McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, Ms. Sacre.
The consultant work continues. A special thanks to Public Works for clarifying the repairs that needed to be done on the ambulances. Thank you, that made a big difference to them. There are any questions, I can take this.
And moving on, we have the Northland Public Library Authority. Mr. Singer's not here, but there was a very thorough reporting of their current activities in our packet. I'm sure if anybody has any questions, I can forward them. Questions? And are there any public comments on the Services Committee or Services in town? Bring none, that concludes the Service Committee reports.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clooney. Uh, under Old Business, we voted a month or so ago to expand our Personnel Board. Uh, and because of that and some people that were rolling off the board, we had three openings. Uh, we asked members of the current Personnel Board to vet that. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Swiger to explain exactly the process and then go through the three that, that that committee would recommend. And then we can do a motion each.
Okay, so the Interview Committee was made up of, by Matt Shipley, who's on the Personnel Board. Uh, myself, Jack Casey, and then our Chief of Police, Ryan Hawk. So four of us performed the interviews. We had eight applications, two were pulled, but there were six total. And we have three that we have selected, so. Do you want to go ahead?
I guess, does anybody have any questions about the process? I think all the interviews were, were recorded, correct?
Yeah.
For any council that wants to see it, so.
Okay. Okay, first up, motion to appoint David Smith as a member of the Personnel Board for a term to end twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Try to go down and vote just a little on each of these.
Yeah, individually, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, is there any comment on this, this nomination? Okay, all right, everybody in favor of, of putting, appointing Mr. Smith as a member of Personnel Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and he opposed.
Okay, motion to appoint Amy Worspan as a member of the Personnel Board for a term to end six thirteen, twenty twenty-five.
Second, second, Mr. Casey. Any comment, discussion, anything on? All right, everyone in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nice. We'll call.
We'll call, go ahead.
Uh, word one.
Nice.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
I'll go last, right?
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Aye.
Word seven.
Aye.
And word three.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, so motion carries.
Five, one.
Five, one, okay.
Okay, next up, motion to appoint Rita Martin as a member of the Personnel Board for a term to end June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Second, I missed Clooney. Discussion comments, anything for the words, council, no? Okay, everyone in favor of Ms. Martin, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Congratulations to you three, and thanks for serving our council.
And, and we'll also have, like, you'll send out an email or, okay, great.
We'll send out a letter.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
And, yeah. Thank you, everybody that helped you. It was, it was an effort.
Thank you, yep.
So, so, thank you. Uh, further under Old Business, as Paul has mentioned. We, I chaired the redistricting process. It's the Republican Committee Chair and the Democrat Committee Chair. We met for probably an hour and a half or two hours and R J did do an exceptional job of showing just all the data. All of the D's or R's or I's were scrubbed. All we looked at was census districts. And we were able to reallocate, uh, different census tracts to be within plus or minus one percent variance throughout all, throughout all our seven districts. I think mo, there is a, half of them really didn't change much. And I think we stole a little bit, we moved a little bit from seven, one, two, and three to, to sort of balance, to sort of balance out things. I think the next step, it goes to the county for, uh, comment on it. And then it should be back here and is that usually a short, so.
Yeah, I would think August will be time for a public hearing.
And then. Okay. We did.
And that's earlier than normal.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, of course you will.
Yeah.
It's earlier than normal. Typically, when looking back the last few times, I think the redistricting was adopted in September and then November, so we're still waiting.
Yeah, yeah, you have plenty of time to see it, a public hearing, plenty of time to ask questions.
I think he meant like now.
Yeah. Yeah.
My life.
Now, we're later, we're done.
We can do both, so. Okay.
Did you pay any chance taking considerations of some of the new constructions that's coming up? Like down off Laser Drive?
Really, we really didn't look five, ten years down the road and say that this community is going to have more or this area is going to have more or less. We really didn't, we really didn't look at that.
We always have the right in the future to have another redistricting regardless of whether the census are not correct.
Uh, I believe the, the town charter is every ten years following the census, so. Even though there may be an anticipation of several hundred folks living there, um, they will be part of the next process. And we can anticipate where there may be new people moving into new developments that may occur in the, in the intervening decade, so. Um, council will look at that again in twenty thirty-two or so. The next, one of the next council.
Yeah, we'll get that put everyone's folder for next time.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, very good. Let's see, update on the Town Manager search, Dr. Rappa, would you like them?
Yes, to date, we have eight applicants. And our, our cutoff date will, will be on the fifteenth or sixteenth, I forget the date off the end. And on the eighteenth, the committee will be meeting and selecting, uh, based on our process and our rubric, those candidates that we will interview. And we will, uh, set up those interviews the week of the twentieth or the twenty-fifth. At which time, uh, council, after the eighteenth, you'll, you'll be notified, crew will be selected for interviews. And we will let you know when those interviews are set up. And any council member can be present, uh, for those interviews. And that's where we are right now.
For your, your work and your committee's work to date.
They're doing well.
Under New Business, we have some housekeeping things to take care of here. So would you like to describe the first one?
Absolutely. As part of the charter and the previous resolution number six. The, uh, it authorizes the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager to authorize temporary investments of, of town funds under the investment policy. So as such, we needed to appoint an interim Assistant Town Manager so that I'm not the only one listed on those items. Um, I have recommended that we appoint the Deputy Tax Collector, who is also currently bonded for the bulk of the town's tax and, and school district's tax billings. So I wanted to recommend that under a vote similar to what happened last week for me.
Any questions, Tricia?
Does Miss, Miss Wagner accept this?
Yes, yes, she asked if I wanted her to attend this evening and I told her since it was housekeeping, I thought it was fine not to.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, very good question. Well, don't prefer motions, anyone would like to make one?
Make a motion to appoint Judith Wagner as an Assistant Manager.
Second.
Second, Ms. Wagner. Uh, any comments before we make a vote? No, okay, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And on that same respect, these two next resolutions are also housekeeping items. They're resolutions that were updated three years ago when, um, Mr. Furman and myself came on board. Um, so they just needed updated for the same purposes, uh, the same thing. And will be adjusted again once the new Town Manager is hired.
So we'll need to vote on these separately, but does anybody have a specific question of Tricia for seven, for resolution seven or eight? None? Would anyone like to make, uh, a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Clooney?
A move to adopt tentatively identified Resolution Seven of twenty twenty-two, amending Resolution Number Eighteen of the twenty twenty series by naming current signatories authorized to sign documents relative to the Town of McCandless' defined benefit and pension plans. Second.
Second, by Ms. Swiger. So are there any questions or comments before we take a vote? Okay, everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, then on to Resolution Eight, uh, floor is open for a motion, if anyone would like to.
Motion to adopt tentatively identified Resolution Eight of twenty twenty-two, operating the temporary investment of town funds by the interim Assistant Town Manager to make transfers of said deposit funds from and to accounts in the name of and owned by the Town of McCandless.
Second by Dr. Rappa, okay. Uh, any comments or questions before we take a vote? Everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Tricia, you want to give us the next one, it's really just extending, how about you?
This is a resolution, um, granted by the Town Attorney to recognize the McCandless North Alagany Heritage Center as a civic and a service organization under the local options small games of chance act to assist in their fundraising efforts.
Okay. So, come, we're, who's, happy you're Joe. Does anybody have questions? Yeah, I was really just like, what, what's the overall plan or like, what's the?
Well. Imagine building a highway. Okay, if you have an obstacle, you can't build a highway. Our charges was getting more interested to the Heritage Center and to raising funds. That's part of our, our charter, so we're looking at different ways to do that. Well, we just had a, a recent success with the golf. Head alluded to in the last week, we have another golf outing scheduled for October twenty, or, I'm sorry, October seventh. It was highly successful. Uh, we're looking at small games of chance to be able to raffle off items such as jerseys from the Steelers or season tickets for, you know, pig games or Steeler tickets. Even being able to do a, a major fundraiser, um, with cash prizes. Yeah, we're looking at the long term health and benefit, uh, to the center. As it sits right now and as we are going through the strategic planning process of identifying how it'll be used in the future.
For county, is there a limit on what's a small game of chance?
It's all defined in the law.
Okay.
You get the license from the County Treasurer.
Five thousand dollars.
Oh, that's not small.
It's small on, on, you know.
Yeah.
For, for overall, you know, you play the lottery, you can get millions. Here you can get twenty-five, but it's set forth in the law, it's regulated by the County Treasurer, once we do this.
And I'm not sure, council, that we're not going to turn the Heritage Center into Monte Carlo. But Monte Carlo might, has been discussed.
Yeah. So other question, like, we only have one license or we could, we could grant that to an Activities Committee, we can grant that to, uh, like the.
The way that it works, and my understanding is that, um, once we have this resolution, that game, that small games of chance will be granted to the Heritage. We will be applying for it as a, a nonprofit or a service organization inside of this power.
Yeah, but do we have multiple of these that we could grant?
No, it's granted by the County Treasurer.
It's granted by the.
We're just granting this, we have to designate them as such.
Each individual has.
Okay, so if the Activities Committee came to us and asked us, we could do that for them?
Maybe, I'd have to make sure they could legally do so, yeah.
I, I think, I would hope that at, at being under the town, that if the Activities Committee was doing something that would this apply to something if they, if we said we are doing it in conjunction with the Heritage Center.
And to your point, as we discussed. Yeah, and to your point, as we've discussed and we've discussed back and forth between committees, there's going to be a lot more cohesiveness. And a lot more of, of, uh, conjoined efforts now moving forward with our, with our, our activities.
As long as some of the proceeds from the combined effort to the heritage center, that will be.
Okay. And I, if I may, um, I know, you know, the, the name of this committee is the. For raising funds and development, I think as a council, we need to provide the heritage center with the tools to do that. Can't raise funds if you don't have tools, can't make something happen.
You know, it, look, I, I've, I've been on the heritage center board now for, for a year. And I gotta tell you something, I've, I've never seen a board that has worked harder. And, you know, we have great leadership with Emily Lutowski. And, but I want to thank the town council, because you guys have really stepped up and supported what we're doing. And I think you understand where we're trying to take this. So I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Clunin. Now, does anyone else have anything? Good. Okay. Good discussion. Floor is open for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, please. I'd like to move to adopt tentatively identified resolution nine of twenty twenty-two. Recognizing the McCandless Northern Allegheny Heritage Center as a civic and or service association under the local option Small Games of Chance Act as amended.
Second. Second, Mr. Casey. I think we've had some good discussions, but is there any other questions or concerns before we vote? Nope. Okay. Uh, everyone in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then the last one is, uh, would Kelly wanna, I don't, come on, tell us.
Hi, good evening, my name is Kelly Harrington, um, I'm a project manager from Gateway Engineering, I assist standos or off use the town consulting engineer. Um, so I'm here tonight, uh, to talk about, um, the North Meadows Basin project, which we presented on a month or two ago now. Um, so we had our bid opening where we received four bids. Um, and today in your packet, you'll see a recommendation letter to, um. Award to the lowest bidder, TA Gaul, um, of Gibsonia. Uh, we recommend awarding both the base bid as well as the add alternate one, which is an amended soil media. Um, their, um, bid came in within our budget, um, and. Um, that's it, so if you have any questions, I'll have you go into them.
Of course, Jeff is also here, yeah.
Yeah.
Additional questions?
Jeff.
Any questions? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion or make a case?
Motion to a one. The contract for North Meadows Drive Basin retrofit project to TA Gaul Incorporated for the amount of seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. For the base bid and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. And alternate bid one, twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Second by Ms. Swiger, okay. Any comments or further questions for Gateway? Nope. Okay. Uh, everyone in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Um, is there any general public comments from those in attendance tonight? Yeah, you have two, one at a time, whoever wants to.
Good evening, Marsha Caligando, one oh five two nine Abby. First thing I wanted to say is thank you for the, uh, coffee with the town manager, that was good. And we appreciate everyone's involvement and everyone coming, and I know that it was a good, a lot of questions and answers. Actually early because we went to the activities inaugural Thursday track, which was also very nice. So I really love that we're having more and more activities in the community and I thank you for that. And, you know, we're, we're a community and, you know, we need to do things like that. But I, I was, wanted to, to, to mention, um, that Allegheny County Council is in the process right now. Of, of fracking ban of, um, and for our county parks. And I understand they currently have the votes to pass that measure, however, Rich Fitzgerald has always stated that he's going to veto it. At this point in time, I know that they are attempting to secure enough votes to override that veto. And we have a new county council representative, Suzanne Felici, I hope I pronounced that properly. Um, but we're not sure of, of how she tends to vote. And will be voting on this measure. Um, I know that town council has worked very hard on our fracking issues. And last year, I believe it was last year, did, uh, change the ordinance that restricts fracking to only a few places in McCandless. So. And from talking to the people and listening to the town council, uh, on that, so many people really did not want fracking that. I do not believe that the majority of residents in McCandless would really want fracking literally in some of their backyards. So, um, you know, we know that it causes a lot of noise. And the trucks will be going through the county. And I don't know if you've been to North Park lately, a lot of our county, those roads are in not great shape. So having those, uh, those trucks going through the park. Not, not a good thing in addition to, as I said, uh, the noise. So, um, I really hope that people will call Ms. Felici and her number is four one two, three five zero, six four nine zero. And ask her to vote no, uh, for no fracking in North Park. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tricia.
Thank you, my name is James Winsimer, I spoke briefly at the last council meeting. I presented, uh, the copy of Hampton Township's, uh, trail bike off-road ordinance. Asking if it could be expedited in, in dealing with the situation that I'm having or in future may help other township residents. It's causing a nuisance right behind my house, I have trail bike rider and riders at times. Uh, it's, it's really an unnecessary noise, we do have ordinance on the book, but they need to be, I guess, what I'm trying to say. Rewritten as, as Hampton's is a lot broader in wording as to how many feet away. You got the, the, dealing with the exhaust fumes, I'm dealing with, uh, loud noise. And even though the pipes, even the police department checked the pipes in compliance, it is an unnecessary noise when it's, when it's done. And it's very inconsiderate and we were talking in the opening about respecting each other and all that. And this is very disrespectful, living in a residential neighborhood to have this going on right behind your back door. And a very quiet, it's, it's, it's disrupting the enjoyment of my property for my wife and I. We're used to listening to the songbirds and watching the hummingbirds and enjoying our backyard. And when it goes on, it's very annoying. I, I got back from vacation Saturday and I pulled in my driveway, first thing I heard was a trail bike riding. And I don't know what was going on last week, but I'm just asking if you could consider expediting or looking at the proposal that I gave you to look at Hampton Township's ordinance, which is much broader. I mean, it has great wording in it and then follow a procedure to have the, uh, laws or the ordinance enforced here. And I'd like to find I P Avenue to have that done if, if possible, so. I just would ask you that you would consider this soon and I really appreciate the time you, uh, you're giving, uh, me to speak here and to present this to you, so. Thank you very much and I hope something was done about it, so, thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments, anyone? Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second, everybody in favor.
Aye.
Okay.